I'd like to call to order the city council meeting and budget meeting for Wednesday, September 28, 2022. If I can have our city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
I'm here.
And Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
And Councilmember Noble.
Here.
And Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor, we have a crime.
All rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Mayor, real quick before, if anything, just to note, the special business items will be removed from the agenda, as will the discussion item.
All right, I think, is that the?
That's the proclamations, those are going to be handled, they will be provided, and then the discussion item, that we can remove that one off for now.
So.
So, motion.
Let's amend that motion, please.
Yes, motion to approve the agenda eliminating special business and item.
Discussion items.
Discussion items, thank you.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, removing special business and discussion items from the agenda tonight. That's, motion is second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries, I believe, five zero. All right. That's over here, sorry. All right, at this point in time, I'd like to open comments from the public for any agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward. State your name and address for the record, seeing none. Moving on to our second budget hearing for fiscal year 2023, proposed budget. Are we moving on right to number two, or are we doing number one?
I'll read a few, a couple paragraphs into the record for number one, and then we can go right into number two.
Perfect. So the first item tonight is fiscal year 2023, proposed budget presentation, and that's going to be our city manager, Andrew McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Really appreciate you guys being here, it means a lot to staff that we were able to get this done tonight, so thank you very much for making the effort to be here. Just going to go through some things that we need to have in the record as part of the final budget approval, and then we can go into the two ordinances related to the adoption of the budget. Florida Statute, Section 200.065 specifies of the procedural steps that must be followed by each government unit in preparation and approval of the property tax millage levy and annual budget. In accordance with these regulations, the certified taxable property values as of July 1, 2022, provided by the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, will be used to determine the ad valorem tax proceeds and the calculation of the fiscal year 2223 budget. Taxing authorities must hold two public hearings to adopt a millage rate and a budget. This evening's hearing is the second public hearing of the City of Green Acres to adopt a tentative millage rate and a budget for the fiscal year 2223. The tentative millage rate and the budget must be adopted by separate votes pursuant to direction provided by the city council at the budget workshop held on July 18, and the budget meeting held on August the 15th, staff has repaired two ordinances required by the truth and millage process for approval by the city council. The ordinance to establish taxable value and set the ad valorem rate, which is ordinance 2022-31, must be passed first, followed by the ordinance to adopt the budget, ordinance 2022-32.
Thank you. Does that conclude that first item?
That's it.
Okay. All right, so our next item is public hearing for ordinance 2022-31, second reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-31, second reading, in establishing a taxable valuation and levying in the ad valorem tax on property located within the corporate limits of Green Acres, Florida, as of the year ending December 31, 2022, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, and we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting once again.
Thank you very much. This first ordinance, ordinance number 2022-31, establishes the taxable value and sets the ad valorem rate for the taxing authority of the City of Green Acres. The certified total taxable value of $2,540,979,752 provided by the property appraisers office is $279,914,13, more than last year's certified taxable value of $2,261,68,339. The 12.38% increase in taxable value is due to an increase in property values, along with an increase in new construction. The millage rate of 6.3 mils applicable to the general fund levy for fiscal year 2023 is 10.55% greater than the calculated rollback millage rate pursuant to Section 200.0651 Florida statutes of 5.6986 mils that generates the same amount of property tax revenue as last year on existing real and personal property. The property tax rate of 6.300 mils set by ordinance 2022-31 would generate $15,367,846 of ad valorem revenue, or $1,475,842 more than fiscal year 22. The proposed ordinances set the total millage at 6.3 mils and appropriate 73,013,015 for the operation of the city in fiscal year 23. The first budget hearing was advertised in the preliminary tax assessment notices, as required by Florida statutes 200.065. The second hearing to set the millage rate and adopt the fiscal year 23 budget tonight, September 28 at 6:00 PM, at the Green Acres City Hall, was advertised in the Palm Beach Post on September 24. There have been no changes from first reading to second reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-31.
There any comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to move, make a move, a public hearing, yes, go ahead.
All right, seeing no comments or questions from the council, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-31. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please state your name and address for the record. For the record, there is no one here from the public, it's just staff. Public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-31 on second reading.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Deputy, by Councilmember Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to item number three, public hearing for ordinance 2022-32, second reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-32, second reading, adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30 of 2023, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2022-32 adopts an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023. The proposed budget increases appropriated revenues and expenditures from $49,561,753 in fiscal year 22 to $73,013,015 in fiscal year 23. Again, the first budget hearing was advertised in the preliminary tax assessment notices as required in fiscal year, in Florida statutes 200.065. The second hearing to set the millage rate and adopt the fiscal year 23 budget is scheduled for September 28, 2022, at 6:00 PM at the Green Acres City Hall, and was advertised in the Palm Beach Post on September 24. There have been no changes from first reading to second reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-32.
There any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-32. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-32 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Dugo?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that motion carries five zero. And as we amended the meeting, the agenda for tonight, we are now, we are not having a special business, so we're moving on to consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Diaz, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. We are now moving to our regular agenda, public hearing for ordinance 2022-20, second reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-20, second reading, amending Chapter 8 Licenses and Business Regulations, Article 3 Business Taxes, Sections 8-46 through 8-72, to clarify business tax receipt requirements for home businesses and amending the fees to obtain a business tax receipt, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, inclusion in code, and an effective date.
All right, who's presenting this one?
I'm going to do all of them.
You're going to do all of them, all right. All right, we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. First reading for ordinance 2022-20 was held on September 14, 22. There were no changes from first reading to second reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-20 on second reading.
There any comments or questions from the council? I don't know, can we? I don't really know. All right, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-20. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, all right, public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-20 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Dugo, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five zero. We are now moving on to public hearing for ordinance 2022-25, second reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-25, second reading, amending Chapter 16 zoning regulations by deleting Article 6 sign regulations in its entirety and adopting a new Article 6 sign regulations, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, and an effective date.
All right, and once again, we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-25 was presented to the city council on September the 14th for first reading. There were no changes from first reading to second reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-25 on second reading.
All right, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-25. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-25 on second reading. Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to public hearing for ordinance 2022-26, second reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-26, second reading, amending Chapter 10 Personnel, Article 4 Retirement, Pensions, and Other Employee Benefit Programs, Division 3 Retirement Systems Authorized, Section 10-148, entitled Public Safety Officers, Firefighters, Retirement Plan and Trust, amending the Florida Municipal Pension Trust Fund defined benefit plan and trust adoption agreement to provide for a deferred retirement trust option plan for those public safety officers who continue to remain members of the city's retirement plan after becoming PBSO employees, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, inclusion in code, severability, and an effective date.
All right, and we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. There is one error on the staff memo for this ordinance 2022-26. The ordinance does say that it was approved on first reading on September 28, that is an error, it was approved on first reading on September 14. There have been no changes from first reading to second reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-26.
All right, are there any comments or questions from the council?
I, I have a question, I probably.
Councilmember Dugo.
Is this a result from, we have like a retirement board committee that all work together?
This came to be after the council approved the drop for fire. The city was approached on whether or not they would consider, as part of the agreement with PBSO, that the city would consider establishing the drop for our police employees. What I had said was that I would consider it as long as it didn't cost the city anything. We have come up with a way that it will not cost the city anything going forward, so I was able to recommend approval by the council to establish the drop for the police.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the council? All right, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-26. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-26 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Diaz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. Moving on to public hearing for ordinance 2022-30, second reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-30, second reading, amending Chapter 11 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Places, Article 4 City Parks, by creating a new section 11-76 to be entitled Smoking and Vaping Prohibited in Parks, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, inclusion in code, and effective date.
All right, we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, this ordinance, ordinance 2022-30, was first presented to the council on September the 14th. Again, there have been no changes from first reading to second reading, staff is recommending approval of 2022-30 on second reading.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I'd like to open public hearings for ordinance 2022-30. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now closed, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-30 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Dugo, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. Moving on to public hearing for ordinance 2022-28, second reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-28, second reading, amending Chapter 4 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 3 Flood Plan Management, to provide for accessory structures and flood hazard areas to specify elevation in manufactured homes and flood hazard areas to address market value and for the purposes providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
All right, and we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, this ordinance, ordinance 2022-28, was presented to the council in first reading on September the 14th. No changes from first reading to second reading. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-28.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-28. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, moving, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, public hearing is now closed, do I have a motion?
Move approval of ordinance 2022-28 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, we're moving on to ordinance 2022-33, first reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-33, first reading, repealing Chapter 8 Licenses and Business Regulations, Article 3 Business Taxes, Section 8-74, conversion therapy prohibited, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
We have our city manager and our city attorney, Chrissy Gudow, presenting.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. In the case of Otto et Al versus City of Boca Raton in the county of Palm Beach, the United States Courts, Court of Appeals for the 11th Circuit, found that the City of Boca Raton's prohibition on conversion therapy to be unconstitutional, to be an unconstitutional restriction on speech and violation of the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. Through ordinance 2017-15, the city's Code of Ordinances similarly prohibits the practice of conversion therapy on any minor within the city. The city recognizes the potential impact of the court's decision, and therefore, it is prudent to repeal Section 8-74 of the city's Code of Ordinances. The city attorney's office has prepared this ordinance and any supporting documents. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-33 on first reading.
All right, anything else that the, our city attorney wants to add?
No, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, are there any comments or questions from the council, Councilmember Noble?
I'd like to elaborate a little bit more on this. By removing this, what does it mean?
It means that the city cannot prohibit the practice of conversion therapy within the city, within the City of Green Acres.
I see. Well, I happen to be in favor and I'm considering the prohibition, so I'll let you know in advance.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, this is a regular, this is first reading, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-33.
Do I have a second? All right, so we don't have a second for this. So I, let's talk a little bit more about this, because this was.
If there's no second, let me ask the attorney, what does that mean?
If there's no second, the motion fails, and a new motion may be made. If I may elaborate on the situation.
Right.
If you recall back when the City of Green Acres adopted this ordinance, most other cities in Palm Beach County adopted similar ordinance, similar to the one that the City of Boca Raton was sued by. They were sued in federal court under Section 1983 as a civil rights violation. The issue with that is, when you get sued under Section 1983 and the other side prevails, they don't need to show any damages, but they are entitled to their attorney's fees. So if the City of Green Acres leaves this on its books, it's open to being sued under Section 1983 federal action, and in that case, you would be responsible for their attorney's fees, and we anticipate, and one reason we're recommending to repeal this ordinance is that the Southern District and the 11th Circuit will rule exactly the same, and we now have an 11th Circuit decision, which would be binding on the Southern District of Florida, and we would likely be found responsible for their attorney's fees. If we repeal it, it moots that argument, and they would not be able to file and recover against the city. So it is strongly recommended to repeal this. Rand Hawke, who is well-known in this area and was one of the proponents of the original ordinance, he has actually sent out emails, which you may be familiar with, also recommending the repeal of this. There's also a resolution that can be passed to really state the city's desire to not have conversion therapy within its municipal boundaries, but by doing so, you don't have an ordinance on the book that you could be sued under and be responsible for attorney's fees.
All right, so, yeah, give me one second. So just, can I, can I make a comment first, please? So this, this here was voted by this council, and I think this was brought up by councilmember, this originally was brought up by you? Or councilmember?
Councilwoman Busque brought up the motion, and I wanted to say that absolutely, I'm absolutely opposed to conversion therapy, but we, we made the motion to approve it, to prohibit it from our city, because at that time, that really was our genuine, true feelings. But we're not going to be able to fight the Supreme or the federal courts, and our position here on the city is to defend the city and to set aside our personal feelings. May I?
Yeah, so that's, I think that's what I was going to bring up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I took that.
That's, that's exactly what I was going to bring up, that unfortunately, we're, if we keep this in the books, we're opening up the city for a lawsuit. Additional expenses that federally has already, a decision has already been, been made, so as much as we might be for this, unfortunately, the law has already spoken, so I think it's, that's why when the original motion.
You're talking in favor of the motion, we heard you, that's enough, I think.
Why do you have to be so rude, Councilmember Noble? Can I finish my comments? Why do you have to shut me up? I am tired of your behavior up here.
I don't think you should control the council.
I'm not controlling anything, I am having a discussion. This is what we're here for, I am sick, and I am tired of the behavior that you display up here every single time.
And you're keeping it alive.
You don't even know, you don't even know what's happening up here half of the time. It's unbelievable, can you let me speak?
You never come here after the time, what are you talking about? I know what's going on.
I am tired, I'm tired, I'm tired of your behavior up here. I just, I want to be able to, to provide my feedback, as I allow you and every other council member up here, I wish that you do the same for me, just a little bit of respect, would be nice.
I wish you would stop trying to control this council.
Okay, I don't know how I'm controlling the council, but, all right. So what I was, what I was getting to is, we're, you know, I think when this first came up, and there was a motion, and I said, well, I think we should have a discussion, is because we're opening up ourselves for liability. So that's why I wanted to continue on the discussion. With that being said, I have councilmember Noble who wants to speak, and I have councilmember Busque who's going to speak after. Councilmember Noble, it's your turn.
Someone has to sue the city, if no one sues the city, then, then the ordinance stays as it is. We did have a motion with no second, therefore, this, as far as I'm concerned, this motion is thrown out. But again, you only get sued if someone sues you, and at this moment, there's no reason to think that someone's going to sue us.
Thank you, Councilmember Busque.
I agree with you, Mayor, I agreed with you, I agreed with our city attorney, I just can't second a motion, I will vote for the ordinance, but I cannot second it.
All right.
Because I think it's wrong.
Anyone else wishing to speak, councilmember Diaz.
I absolutely agree that I am against any sort of conversion therapy. I think I would personally feel more comfortable if this ordinance was on the same agenda with a resolution that we are, that we pass,[1718.45] with a resolution, that we are, that we pass a strong resolution saying that we are against it. I think if both were together on the same agenda, I, I could then, I'd feel more comfortable.
Excellent idea.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we, we could certainly, since this is just first reading, we could bring back at second reading such a resolution. And I believe one has actually already been drafted, and Rand Hawke, through his emails, has been circling that as well.
Excellent. Councilmember Dugo?
Yeah, my question was, can we pass a resolution with the ordinance still being on record? Doesn't, I thought that had to be eliminated before a resolution could be passed.
Correct. What we could do at second reading of this ordinance, should it be passed on first reading tonight, is that at second reading, on the agenda right after it, we would have such a resolution.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Tharp?
I, I would have to agree with Councilmember Busque and, and Councilmember Diaz. I, Ms. Councilmember Diaz, I like the idea of bringing something back. I, it, it troubles me that, that, you know, something, you know, there being sued, but you know, I, you know, I think we also have to take stock in that, you know, Rand Hawke, who was behind this ordinance to begin with, is, is asking for us to repeal it. So I, I think we should, A, you know, move forward, but I, I agree with Councilmember Diaz, we need to bring something back at the next meeting.
Okay. So with that, I will, can I now second Ms. Dugo's?
Thank, I was gonna say, so we still have to get this second to do that, and I wasn't gonna be?
As much as I don't want to second it because of, I don't believe in it, I agree with you.
I feel the same.
I will, I will second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, so, so I have a motion by Councilmember Dugo, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. At this point in time, are there any other comments or questions that any council member has? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No? And all opposed? Councilmember Noble, I believe is the only one opposed? All right, so that motion carries four, one. All right, moving on to ordinance 2022-34, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-34, first reading, amending the city Green Acres budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30 of 2022, inclusive, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Council Policy Number 6 requires the city council to take action to authorize budget adjustments between cost centers, departments, and funds. A budget adjustment is required in order to account for the $10 million lost revenue in the American Rescue Plan, or the state, and state and local fiscal recovery fund. The city received a total of $20,593,599 in American Rescue Plan funds. $10 million of these funds can be moved to the General Fund for Lost Revenue. Ordinance 2022 is to authorize the budget adjustment that documents the movement of the funds to the General Fund. The ordinance increases the budget revenues and expenditures by $10 million in fiscal year 22. The proposed budget amendment has been prepared in accordance with all applicable state statutes and code requirements, and staff is asking for approval of ordinance 2022-34 on first reading.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Noble.
Second.
Councilmember Busque, are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, we, we have amended the, the meeting, so we are, you know, we're not gonna have the discussion tonight on the discussion items, so we're moving on to comments for the, from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, moving on to the city manager's report, city manager McHugh.
Thank you, I just have one item. Again, I really do appreciate you guys coming in this evening for us to be able to pass the fiscal year 23 budget. It has been a very difficult 24 hours for many, and all of those impacted will continue to be in our thoughts and prayers. Just something that, you know, I think on a good note, that how we're going to be able to try and assist is that, as part of the Florida Fire Chiefs Association statewide emergency response plan, Green Acres Fire Rescue will be sending a fire engine and four personnel to assist in the rescue and recovery of victims who have been impacted by Hurricane Ian. The personnel were deployed, the personnel will be deployed in the early hours tomorrow morning after the request was made by the state of Florida, so I am very grateful for our chief, that he was proactive in being able to set this up, and very grateful for the personnel that have, have volunteered. So we had more volunteers than we had slots, so we do wish them well, safe travels, and for a quick return home safely. In addition to that, PBSO will also be sending a team of 30 to 40 staff from their emergency field force, so we do wish them all well, and, and they come home safely. That's it for me.
Thank you, Chief and Captain, thank you for, for stepping up. I think this council appreciates your representing Green Acres, so thank you for doing that.
God bless you.
Absolutely. All right, moving on to the city attorney's report, Kristy?
No report this evening, just stay safe, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor and city council's report, I'm gonna start to my left, Councilmember Busque.
Nothing, I just hope everybody stays safe. I'd like to thank Fuller and Captain, Captain Moore for stepping up and, and sending the troops.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz?
No comment, same, thank you very much, and I'd also like to thank our city manager, she's doing a great job in our PIO with getting information out during the storm, so thank you.
Councilmember Dugo?
I, I re, it, I can't say thank you enough to the captain and to the chief, I, I really can't. It's incredible.
Councilmember Noble?
Only one point, the city manager's doing an excellent job of running the city.
And Deputy Mayor Tharp?
Again, thank you, Chief, Captain, also Andrea and Quinn, thank you for, for, you know, trooping this one out this evening, you know. When no one shows up, it's tough, but thank you, that's, that's all I have this evening.
All right, and for the mayor's report, I just, I just wanna go on the record and, and say I'm not a fan of tonight's meeting, and, and the reason is because the, I don't feel like the public was, was able to be here. Not that we get much, and I understand why we had to have this meeting, but I hope that moving forward is, we don't do this any, anymore. There's no public transportation happening in the county today or tomorrow. I think it sends mixed signals when the city's closed, but yeah, we're having our council meeting. Just my personal point of view, I think we should try to have public input. We had seven public hearings, and there was really no public here, so. That's just my, my personal feeling, I, once again, I understand why we had to have this meeting, but if it wasn't budgetary, and it, we weren't against the constraint, I would rather not have to, to have the meeting during, when we're having, going through a situation like this where everything's closed and there's no public transportation, so. This is my, my feedback. That concludes the mayor's report. There's stuff to sign, by the way, so please don't leave. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry.
Meeting's adjourned.